And if anybody comes on, let me know that you can see me. It's early. It's still a couple of minutes of. I'm just letting people know about this live stream and then today I'm going to be working on promotion. So if any of you guys come on and you can hear my voice Skype me, let me know. And show you guys some stuff. I do have a letter to write. I'm sure I need to, I need to post on my blog. I don't even know what I'm going to post about, but I'll come up with something. Um, whoops. No, we want that to post. I just need to know that someone can hear me. Let's see. And again, if you come on and you can hear me, if you're here a little early, let me know Skype me or Facebook me, let me know that I am live and you can hear me good. I think I am. Pretty sure I am. Pretty gosh darn sure I am, but you never know. It's still early. Okay. Well, I could tell by looking at this. This will tell me if I'm live. Which I am. Okay. Coolio, I am live. Thanks, Thomas. Thank you so very, very, very much. You're a nice boy. I appreciate you. Did I do this one? All right. Let's get down to it. I have a lot of promotion work to do today. I've got a couple of things going on. If you're just joining us, I'll say this again in a few minutes. It's still not even 11. Still not even 11. Let's go over here. All right. So if you guys have come on, this is Diane Hockman and I'm going to be doing, this is a live work session for Team Camelot. And I do these, I work live in front of people pretty much every day. I actually do what I really do in front of people. We spent a lot of years teaching and training and teaching and training. What I found is people would absorb it intellectually, but they weren't executing. So I just decided to work in front of people and invite them to come and work along with me. So the concept is you certainly, if I'm doing something that you need to see me, then you can certainly watch. But otherwise, I encourage you to kind of minimize me and listen to my voice as I'm explaining what I'm doing and you can work right alongside with me. Generally, when you come on, you're going to see me doing blog posts. You're going to see me writing letters and teaching you the whole psychology behind the letters that I write. The letter, I mean, I get ridiculous results with my letters. So the psychology behind the letters, you'll see me make videos. I literally will make videos live in front of you today. It will not be because I'm not fluffed up. I've been going since seven o'clock this morning and haven't gotten pretty yet. So we won't be making a video that's live, but we will make some videos today and we'll see what we get done. But generally, we try to stay on for about an hour, sometimes a little longer and I just, just work. So if you have questions or comments or want me to address anything, we're at facebook.com/TeamCamelot. Okay, facebook.com. Team Camelot. A lot of people watch these recorded and they are only available to our team. Now, if you are not familiar with Team Camelot, guys, it's basically everybody that's underneath me in any of my lineages in the programs I work with. If you're watching at my site right now, my links to different things are down there. If you're watching through somebody else's site, hopefully you have some links there. You know, you can get back to the person that invited you. Basically, you get to come to any of our calls. Sometimes we put them out in public, but a lot of times we don't. You get our private Facebook group where myself and several leaders are available, you know, to answer your questions and help you. You get an accountability group. You also get a private website where we have the archives of all our, you get the MP3s to our morning mindset calls, which are becoming extremely popular. We're having great crowd every single morning. You get the MP3s. You can throw them on your phone or your iPod, as well as access to all the recordings of these sessions. So you can throw one on anytime. If you need somebody to work alongside of you, all you have to do is throw on a recording of myself, Vanessa, Kathy, whoever, one of the leaders that's working and work with us. So today is, I got a lot of promotion to do. I am in the running for the, for the No Excuses Summit. I don't know if you guys have ever been there, but it's a really big event and I've spoken there twice before. I spoke, I had a full speaking spot two years ago and then last year I was on the Expert of Experts panel. And this year I just found out, excuse me, I'm going to sneeze. I just found out that, um, that I'm in the, you know, up at the top of the heap, so I may be able to pick a spot again. And so I'm going to do a little promotion. And then guys, anytime you want to get the word out about something that you have going on, whether it's a launch of a product, whether it's, you know, I mean, I recruited 87 people over the weekend into a program during a launch. So promotions are important, whether it's a launch of a product, whether it's a webinar, it's a call, it's a Super Saturday promotion. You want to start to understand. Most people just run around and slam a link and nobody cares about that. I mean, I can show you how many groups. I just did it. I threw some links to this, this stream in a couple of groups, but how many of these groups? It's just person after person after person with link after link after link after link after link after link. It's just noise. I mean, does anybody really read any of this? Does anybody really care? What you have to learn to do is to catch the attention of a person, to scratch their record, to get them to notice what you're talking about. Everybody else is just making noise. So you have to understand what makes a human being tick psychologically, emotionally, et cetera. So what I'm going to do is of course I want people to vote for me for the No Excuses Summit, but I'm also looking for people to purchase tickets and come, you know, I want to be one of the top ticket sellers. So I'm going to create a video with some, this site is hang on. I don't even know what my link is. It's animoto.com. If you're going to buy the, buy the commercial plan, it's free, but then there's commercial plans and stuff and the free doesn't let you do as much. I have a commercial plan. If you're going to buy the commercial plan, you know, I'd really appreciate it if you get ahold of me and get the link from me. So, you know, there's a commission made. I'd appreciate it because I'm going to show you my strategy on all this and it would be great if you would, you know, somebody, you know, somebody's going to make money. It could be Animoto, which is owned by Google, or you can send some my way. And I think you should because I'm a nice girl. Plus I'm teaching you for, you know, all kinds of cool stuff. Okay. So apparently they have changed the interface again. They keep changing it on me. Oops. We're going to upload some pictures from past events. And what we're going to do, that's not where I want to be. I want to be in here. It takes a little while, so I'm going to just upload a batch of them and then we'll go do other work and then we'll come back. And I'm looking for the right folder. These are from No Excuses. And then what we're mostly going to do is upload a lot of pictures of people having fun. When was this? It was. Looking for the pictures of the bathtub. This was in, there it is. We're just going to pull some. Good time pictures here. Let's see. And we're going to mix them up. Guys, videos that evoke emotion in people are very effective because people all want to be loved and part of something and have friends and, you know, especially the older we get, events like this are reminiscent of, you know, high school fun, et cetera. So people want to be a part of stuff like that. So the more we can show them, whoops, wrong thing, the more we can show them lifestyle. See, a lot of people think it's just about bond to lifestyle. We want this one. So I'm going to show them lifestyle and I'm going to have them feel that if they hang out, they're going to have a ball. Where's my kissy picture? I'll take this one. And in this folder, you are also seeing pictures of the illustrious Kathy Heath in the limo that I got her. Let's do this one. This is us in the bathtub. Don't ask. Some of these pictures are from England too. Let's see what else we got here. We got two dozen ugly pictures of me. Really bad. Then we got some good ones, but I don't know which ones are which. So let's try this. Let's try this. Let's pick one of the wiki wacky ones. Looking for something that looks like it's remotely fun. Who's talking? Yeah, that's okay. Thanks. Use the crystal one. Oh, the one of me in front of the crystals or us? I don't remember. What do I got here? Let's see. I know I have one of me standing in front of the crystals hanging on to them. I just don't know where it is. I don't know if somebody else took it. Do you know where it is, Kath? Yeah. Do we know where it is? These are in England. I don't know why these are in here. And then let's let those up, cancel. Let's let these upload. And then I got to check because there's definitely a video of us screaming, "We love no excuses." And I think it's one of those videos in that folder. And then I got to figure out where that crystal picture is. I don't know where it is, Kath. I think somebody took it. I can look and see if it's on Facebook. So you guys are seeing the reality of making this video, whoops, wrong one, me making this video. And some of you guys might say, "Well, I came here to watch her make a video." No, you came here to learn the psychology behind the video. See the value and what people don't understand. Oh, thank you, Kathy. Kathy just sent it to me. People are so busy trying to make a buck that they don't understand that they're missing all the wisdom. If I can emotionally move someone, okay, if I can emotionally move someone, they're much more likely to buy something from me or do what I want them to do. I gotta get this. Let's see. Okay, I don't think there's all right. So I got to see if the other one was edited, shorter or not. No. All right. So apparently I thought I clipped it and saved it somewhere. Let me look at my videos. So what you're doing is you're coming to really understand the psychology. Like I make videos that make people cry and they call me up and they're like, "Oh my gosh, I could have sworn I made this." Maybe I didn't. I'm going to have to clip it. We may not do this whole video during this session because I don't want to waste the whole session on this, but I want you guys to understand. Let me save this folder. I mean, save as. And let's put that into the pictures, into that folder. That's that May one, May. On it in here. Okay. And we'll clip that other video, but and you guys will see the end game, but what I'm going to do is see, I could just say, "Vote for me." Vote for me for No Excuses. And by the way, guys, I really wish all of you guys would vote for me. That's right over at dianehockman.com/vote. Okay. It would really help me out. So dianehockman.com/vote. And of course, those of you that are planning on coming to the event, we will have a private mastermind. We will have all kinds of fun stuff. So if you get your ticket through me, ask me how to do that, you know, you'll get to come to hang out with us. All you got to do is buy a ticket to the event through my link. You get to come out to a private mastermind. But the psychology behind all of this is that we want the people to feel part of something. We want people, when you're recruiting, when you're, when you're talking to people, you know, when you're creating culture, everything is about getting the people to want to be a part of something. And most people miss that because they're just so busy trying, they're desperate trying to recruit someone. People don't just get motivated just by making money. They're motivated by making money, but they're moved by their emotions. And the sooner you learn that, the better. Okay. The sooner you learn that, let's let that, it has to do its thing. So let's let the pictures upload. Oh, they're all uploaded. So we're going to, we're going to change around. We're going to put one of these at the beginning. We're going to put this at the end. We're looking for the picture that Kathy, it's probably, is it transferred yet? Yep. Okay. So we're going to add that picture that Kathy just sent me. I'm guessing it's, there it is, me in the chandelier. It's the most ridiculous picture. We're going to take the wild and cra- wait, whoa, go over there. Uh, no, we want serious one up here. We want wild and crazy one down here. We want, we got too much Jordan, way too much Jordan. Okay, let's get rid of this one. We need more pictures. Let's go to pictures from before. Let's go back another year. So we're going to eight, I think April here. What do we got in here? Take that one. I was like an idiot and I didn't take that many pictures the first year. I don't know why. Uh, this was the cool VIP party when we were up in the suite and the pool and of course, who was in the pool? David Wood. Oh gosh. Uh, here, some of these are fun with us all snuggling on the couch. I need a Vegas skyline picture. I'll go grab one of those somewhere. Yeah, because that doesn't do it justice. Uh, okay. Where'd it go? Okay. We're going to clip this real quick. Okay. Split. Remove. This should be fine. Okay. Split. Remove. We're gonna no, no. Guys, tell me facebook.com/TeamCamelot. Is it interesting for you to watch me do this? I don't have to do this. I just thought you guys might like to see me do some promo and how I spin an event. Guys, if you have an event coming up, for those of you that are in power, we have an event in Chicago coming up. You can spin that event. For those of you that are in MLSP, our next event isn't until October. You know, for those of you in Numis, you can take pictures from past events and do different things with them. And even if you don't have your own personal pictures, you can create a a, a video, whoops, I'm hitting the wrong button. You can create a video that will cause people to feel emotional. Okay. And that's, geez, come on, stop doing this. That's what you're after. So tell me, and I'm like open. You guys can say, "This is boring. This is interesting." You know, I want you to see how I line it up, why I line it up, but if it's boring, that's cool. Let's see. See if anybody told me anything on Team Camelot. Let's see if anybody's even communicating with me today or not. Nope, nobody's communicating with me. So I'm just doing whatever the hell I want. It's so cool. Doing my thing. Okay, is it done? Okay. Let's check it. We're going to put in the video. Okay. So we're going to go over here. Back to creating our video. We're going to add that video. We're going to go into videos. Let that video upload. In the meantime, we're going to start working on spinning some stuff for this. Okay. Guys, people don't care about you. Okay. They care about what's in it for them. Okay. Oh, good, Chris. Good. They care, I don't know if that's Chris or Kathy, but they care about what's in it for them. Okay. Now, we all consciously and outwardly, you know, we want to help everybody and we care about everyone, all this other stuff. But the bottom line is the reality is we all have a survival mechanism or survival instinct and we want to learn something or gain something. And we will pay for access to that which we think is going to get us what we want. That's what people do. They focus on what they want. Okay. And the sooner you learn that, one, you do it, you may believe you don't, but you do it. And then also people are doing it. Okay. So if we, instead of focusing on what we want, if we focus on giving other people what they want, we'll get what we want. Okay. We have to get comfortable with that. So people want to feel part of something, to make money, to be able to come and go, you know, where they want. To, you know, be free to travel, to send their kids to the prestigious college. They want to keep up with the Joneses. Then we get down into these lower level things. They want to show their brother they're smarter than them. They want to show off at the high school reunion, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So we have to create feelings in people when we're marketing that cause them to believe that you are the root or the path to what they want. It's taken a long time to upload. We're going to have to pick some music too. If they feel that you are the root or the path to what they want, they will stick by you. What are the dates? I don't even know where this darn thing is. Let's go. Does the computer, she no move? It's stuck. I'm completely stuck. Okay, my computer's locked. I don't know if you guys can hear me. I'm just going to sit here and chat. Because there's nothing to do. My computer is problematic. Everybody knows it. I get lectured. Thomas, maybe one day you'll call me and walk me through deleting a bunch of stuff over here. I'm afraid to touch it. But I probably need to move stuff to a drive, but I need access to it. And every time I try to move stuff to a drive, I can't get at it and I have crankiness. So, uh, let's see. Are we happy now? No, we're not happy now. And remember, if you haven't voted yet, I'd really appreciate it. It's dianehockman.com/vote. I'm on the bottom right of the first page. And I can't seem to get anywhere or do anything. So I'm just going to work on my iPad for a minute while this thing comes around. Guys, by the way, this is the type of tasking, like when I hit something and I get stuck on something, the first thing I do is I just grab something else. Sorry, do something else. I don't lose time and I don't get all like freaked out like, uh, you know, uh, I'm stuck. Okay. Here we go. I can't see anything. So somebody's Skyping me too, but it won't work. So it's just cranky. When I, when I do the hangout, I think I have too many things. Let's close that down. We'll figure it out. If Vanessa's on by any chance, Vanessa, I'm, I need, or Kathy or whatever, I need somewhere on the, on the, in the Team Camelot group, maybe a doc or maybe there is one, I don't know, where people can access the membership site for our members because they're asking for audios and stuff like that. So I need to know where the stuff is because I don't even know the login off the top of my head. So if somebody made a doc and put it in there so I can point to it, it would be really helpful. Really helpful. In fact, it would be awesome sauce, as my friend Greg Gomez likes to say. Awesome sauce is the word of the week. That's what I say. Okay. Oh, I have that one. It's actually on my cover right now, Kath. Okay. It says Firefox is cranky. I don't know. Okay. So the dates are May 17th to 19th, 2013. Move this over. Whoa. I'll fix that. Now, why will I spend so much time on this video? Just like when I write letters and you guys see me write letters, I do need to write a letter today. Come on. Because I can use the video for the next, you know, week, longer than that. I can use the video forever, but this particular But this particular video, I'll be able to continually use all week long and pump it. And then I'll be able to go into, like if I make a version of it today, I can go back and edit it later and add more pictures and so on and so forth, so... Where'd it go? It just doesn't... I guess let me let the video finish. We'll put it there. Let's put this like up here. I definitely have more pictures somewhere. More fun pictures, which I will grab. Let's check the music. What in the world is triple scoop music? I don't know what that is. We're gonna pick a song. I want something kinda spicy. Yep. Yeah, I've used this one before. It's good. Sue... And we'll add one more text. Computer. I'll fix that in a second. Okay, computer is not happy. And again, I've said this on a lot of sessions, guys. This is the reality of business. Sometimes your computer doesn't work. Sometimes this doesn't work, sometimes that. This is the stuff that most people just like, they freak out and they go, "I can't do it! I can't do it!" Put this like down here. Let's put this up here. And we're still waiting for that video to upload. Okay? So, yeah, we got a couple of things that we wanna promote today. Okay? First of all, for those of you that guys have been watching my progress over the weekend, there was a launch of a company called Pure Leverage, which is basically GVO. If you've heard of it before, they've launched a new, you know, platform where they're paying 100% commissions, and it's basically auto responders and internet tools and stuff like that. It's a great deal, 'cause it's only 25 bucks. So, lots of people wanted it. Plus, it's being incorporated in a lot of the systems. So, what I did was I went and I really worked my list, and we talk all the time. What do we do every day? Meet 10 new people. We communicate with our... And we create a new piece of content. Okay? And we can do promotion on top of it. So, I was able to put in 87 people. So, which is incredible. Okay? So, now what I'm doing is I'm spinning, I call it spin, promotion, spin. Okay? I'm spinning the fact that I was able to do that to get people to want to contact me, to do more work with me. Okay? So, I show... And I'm really not one to do this that often, but 87 people in two and a half days, I think is pretty darn good. So, I'm showing my results. Now, how can you use this if you did not recruit 87 people? If you did anything, if you ran your first solo ad and you got 87 leads, if you got 22 leads, you could do a screenshot from your Aweber or from your auto responder. Now, it would be pure leverage. How could you do this? If you just joined up by pure virtue of saying, "Welcome Sally Smith to the XYZ team", it lets people know that you've been recruiting. Okay? We wanna use pictures of you at events, pictures of you with players. Okay? Pictures of you showing lifestyle. If you go to the beach, if you go to New York City, if you go to Chicago, anything that you're doing, you can have a picture of you playing mini golf with your kids, and people are attracted to it. Okay? People like to see travel. People like to see lifestyle. So, and aside from documentation, okay, 'cause documentation always works, you also can use photographs and lifestyle. And let me show you this. What are you... Why are you doing that? I hate my computer. But I better not hate it, 'cause it'll get mad at me. I'll show you. I'm teaching, not working today, 'cause I'm waiting on my computer. I really like to be working when I'm doing this. My computer's locked again. Once it gets like this, it gets impossible. So, I have pictures. I like to go to concerts. I have a lot of pictures of me at concerts. By the sheer fact that I go to concerts, people start to create fantasies in their heads about what my lifestyle is like. Okay? Concerts are a big deal. It doesn't even have to be big name acts. It's just that you're going to live music. The average person doesn't go to live music. This picture here, I'm actually in the dressing room of the Pearl Theater in... At the... I forget which resort in Vegas. But this picture, it's an unusual picture. It looks like some... A couple of people thought I was in my bathroom, which I am not. This is actually backstage where rock and roll stars get dressed. Anything unusual, anything interesting, anything different, people are going to respond to. So, when we're promoting, okay? We're looking to catch people's attention. And then once we do, we tell them where we're going to be. So, what happens is we become very attractive. And then, "Oh, by the way, here's where I hang out." Now, just to show you a couple of things just recently, we put up, this is a pic... No excuses. We had a huge suite. It was incredible. So, here we are in the bathtub, and I'm saying, "Who will be in the bathtub with me at the next No Excuses Suite Retreat?" Okay? And this is Jordan and Adam, and they're pretty well-known marketers. So, I'm saying, "Who's gonna hang out with us? Who's gonna have fun with us?" This is a picture that was taken the other night with my new hair. But notice I hold up a glass of wine. That's lifestyle. Okay? People like to see that. This is me getting my hair done. It's ridiculousity. Looking for... Here, here's a picture at the Maroon 5 concert last week. Okay? And they see I'm at the Maroon 5. How cool is this? Okay? I have a whole folder. We're screwing around here with our crowns. We're having a good time. I have a whole folder. Oh, by the way, these things, memes. Guys, you can get an app for your iPad. You can get an app for your phone. You can take any picture and write silly or fun things on it. So, like this was just... You know, this is Jordan. Be a model or just look like one. Ha, ha, ha. And then this one was a picture of Captain Jean-Luc Picard, because we were talking about getting warm cookies in first class on an airplane, and we were just screwing around. You can get this, just look up for apps for memes. M-E-M-E-S, memes. And you can do all kinds of fun stuff. You can really do a lot of fun stuff with your pictures from events. You can, you know, you can... You just gotta make sure you have some room. Like, we could do something fun here with these girls, with me and Jackie and so on. You also, they give you pictures, but you can use your own pictures. And that will make a difference for you. Anything that you do to show more fun, more lifestyle, and then... But here's the hook. A lot of people put up pictures. But when you put up the picture, it has to point to something to do then. Okay? It has to point at something to do or somewhere to go. That's what I'm gonna do, Kathy. I'm gonna get more pictures off of the thing. You guys, you understand? So, this video, I'm gonna take it and I'm gonna use it. Man, why is this not uploading? Maybe it got stuck. Maybe I should cancel and start over. It's not uploading. This video we'll use to get votes. Then I'll turn around and I'll use it to sell tickets. Then I'll turn around and promote right up to the event. Then I'll turn around and re-edit it with new pictures afterwards, and then do post-promotion, okay? After the event. This is how much fun we have. Don't you wanna go to the next event? By the way, the next event's in Chicago. Don't you wanna come? You missed this one. Now, I'm gonna be at the Empower Event in Chicago. Don't you wanna come to this one? Here's where you sign up. I recruit more people. And here's where you buy your ticket to the event so we can hang out together. You guys gotta get this. Especially if you work in a large company that has large events, I am telling you, you are missing out in a huge way if you are not promoting like this. Like, hugely. And most people don't know how to do this, and they don't at all. I've spent an awful lot of time on this video that... Not No Excuse... No Excuses 2. I want No Excuses. This one. Won't be great if I could see any of these things. This one's good, I know. Look, Thomas, there's me and you. I can't do more than one at once? This one? Oh, why, why don't it let me do multiples? Oh, this is annoying. We're showing everybody how much fun we're having and getting them to wanna come. Guys, this is a moneymaker. Okay, this is a moneymaker. And even if I do nothing but make this video in this hour and explain to you why, this video will make me thousands of dollars. But I still have to meet 10 people. I still have to post... I've created a piece of content. Well, this is a piece of content, but I really would like to work on my blog. And I still need to make sure that I write to my list. 'Cause that's zero level marketing. That's what has to get done every day. If it doesn't get done, I haven't done my job. Anything else in here that I want? I don't think so. I think it's good. Okay. So... Why do these look like they're blurry? They shouldn't be blurry. We're gonna... Won't connect to my computer. I'm giving up on this for today. I wanted it for my... My letter. Kinda can't do my letter without this. You understand, these are not necessarily big open rates, but starting from here, I've created over $3,000 in residual income since the 27th. What was that? Wednesday? And today's Tuesday? So, in less than a week, I've created a new, fresh $3,000 worth of income through what I've been teaching you, which is meet 10 people a day, blog or put content out every single day, and also communicate with your list every day. And because I've been consistent and because I've built up that list, even with low open rates, even without a million clicks, 'cause a lot of people show you, "It has to be this, and it has to be that", and you think you have to be all that, internet marketer fancy-dancy, you are able to create income pretty much effortlessly. And what's scary about the stuff like I did over the weekend, what's scary about it is the money just keeps coming. The money just keeps coming. And everybody is so busy running that they won't be consistent. And when they're not consistent, they can't ever get to this place. And I've become one of the most... Not... I wanna use the word powerful, but I don't mean powerful, not a power broker. But one of the, you know, when people think, "Who do you want to be in your affiliates?" It's Diane Hockman. "Who do you want to be on your team?" It's Diane Hockman, because I've become one of the most influential people in this industry through simplicity and consistency. So... All right. We're gonna go to the internet. Anybody remember Deputy Dog? I spelled them wrong. Actually, no. Let's just do a picture. We won't do a video. Deputy Dog's an old-school cartoon. I'm gonna turn the livestream off soon, guys. My computer's just ridiculous today. I can't get anything done. I have to stop the things that are going on. Okay, well, that's Droopy Dog. We don't want Droopy Dog. We want Deputy Dog. Let's use this. The Deputy Dog Show. There we go. Nostalgia makes you money. Nostalgia makes you money. Somebody write that down. Scappy thing, move out of my way. So... Here's the gist of my letter today. Somebody stole my copy yesterday again. Somebody took my email that I wrote, copied it and pasted. This is a pretty moderately well-known marketer. And they copied and pasted my letter and sent it out, almost word for word, 'cause they had to take out that I have 13 years' experience. And they sent it out to their list to sell something competing against me. So, they literally just stole my letter. They didn't frame it. They didn't use it as inspiration. They didn't ask. They just took my letter to compete against me in that launch. And now I am deputizing my whole list to watch out for people doing that. I gotta take that image and put it on my blog. Host it. 'Cause I'm gonna put the picture of the Deputy Dog Show in my... In my email. My pictures. We're gonna find Deputy Dog, CBC. Right, Bob? Nostalgia makes you money. Nostalgia in cartoons and music lyrics, quotes from TV shows. Marcia, Marcia, Marcia. All kinds of stuff. Like that. People love it. It tickles them. It also stimulates places in their brain. If you entertain people while you teach them and sell them, they will stick around. If you entertain people while you teach them and sell them, they will stick around. We're gonna add a picture. Now, sooner or later, I'll figure out how to use the new auto responder. But right now, I have a grandfather $20 Aweber account. Most people are paying hundreds of dollars for their Aweber. I pay 20 bucks, no matter how many leads I get. So, therefore, I'm not in a big rush to move. If you see me not moving right away, it's because I'm not in the same position as most of you. For you guys, I would get on Pure Leverage, and within a couple of days, you'll be able to move your leads. I would move. Okay? Chest it, check it, spend a month on both and make sure that it's solid. They've been around for a long time. But if you don't see me move right away, don't be like, "Well, she sold it to me and she didn't move." I'm not in a position where I'm spending gobs of money. Mine's 20 bucks, and truthfully, it's free, because I make hundreds of dollars with Aweber every month. Now, if you quit Aweber and you bought it through me, I'm gonna lose my six bucks a month. I'll cry in my suit. You know, what are you gonna do? Okay, do you remember the cartoon Deputy Dog? If you don't remember it. If you don't remember it. Your mom or dad. And today, I am deputizing. Now, the word "deputizing" or deputy, okay? It's just a weird word, which is why this letter... If I said to everybody, "Hey, some chick stole my letters, and I want you all to watch out and make sure that she doesn't do it again. If you see anyone steal my letters, make sure you tell me right away." Okay? If I said that, it'd be like, "Okay, whatever." But I'm doing this whole Deputy Dog thing. I'm making you my deputy. I'm going to give you a gold star. This is what I want you to do. I want you to look out for me. I want you to, you know... I've spent 13 years working on this and blah, 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 blah. And I love teaching people how to write copy. And I do it for free pretty much every day. But what kills me is when people just take it, blah, 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 blah. So I really couldn't care less. Somebody took my copy, big deal. You know, whatever. But it makes a dramatic story for my list and also puts them on alert, watching for me. But here's what they have to do every day, and here's what you have to get. They have to read my email every day so they can guard and make sure nobody stole it. Ding, 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 ding. Okay? And even Bob Clark. That should excite you right there. I don't know who else is listening. I have no idea who's watching. I'll check the Team Camelot page. But for those of you that are watching that have a clue... And if you're new, don't worry. You will. Just hang out. Hang out with people that are doing what you want to do. You'll get a clue. Don't get overwhelmed. But for those of you that have a clue, if I do an interesting storyline, an interesting narrative, and I include cartoons and I make it lots of fun, and I deputize them to watch out for me and watch my back, they have to read my email every day. And then at the end, I'm also going to deputize them to help get me on the stage at No Excuses. So do you see how I'm engaging my list? Took me a half an hour. Took me 50 minutes to get to the juice here. Sorry, my computer's not working right. But that juice right there, that is very valuable, what I just gave you. Okay? By the way, if you're watching today, if you're a guest and you got a link from somebody, you really want to get to be a part of Team Camelot. Okay? You really want to learn this marketing. You want to join one of our opportunities. If you're watching on Diane Hockman right now, they're listed right there. Pick one. Pick one. Okay? They range from 20 bucks a month up to 150 bucks a month. You know, whatever you want. Pick something. If you're on a budget, pick, you know, pick My Lead System Pro and get on the Academy account. I don't recommend that, and I can't give you very much time if you're over there, you know, at that level. But if that's what you got, just to be able to access us and get into this, guys, this type of copywriting can make you thousands... And I do mean hundreds of thousands of dollars. Now, am I making a... Legally, am I making an income claim? Do I believe that no matter what, you will make money? No, it depends on your efforts, your skill set, your audience, et cetera. But I'm telling you now, you just watch evidence of all the money I created over the weekend and the 87 people that I recruited over the weekend in two and a half days on a lazy Saturday and Sunday because I can write. And because I'm daily, every day, I meet 10 people. I put out content and I write my list. And if you do that daily and you work on your writing, guess what? You can make a boatload of money. Okay? I'm passionate now. Okay? What is this box? I don't want buffer. I don't... Why are you here? Okay. Okay. Uh, there one that's called Plage... E-U-R-I-S-M, maybe? R-E-U-R... Nope. She blows it. We'll do it. Check it out. Who is it? Okay. I said "ass." So here is what I... As of today, I am... And Dean's going to teach me, by the way. I heard that if I change the resolution of my screen, it's easier for you guys to see. I'm hoping that you guys know how to pop up the box if you're watching through a YouTube link, which you are. All you got to do is on the bottom right-hand corner of the video, there's a thing to make it larger so you can actually read what I'm writing. Okay? Sometimes I say aloud. I'll read it aloud at the end. But you want to be able to read this. Okay? I'm writing some good copy here. So I said, "It's plagiarism, and more than anything, it's just a crappy way to treat your colleagues and your list. Passing off stuff that you did not write as your own..." Of course, I have 4,000 typos in here. "...as your own just to make a buck because your lazy ass won't write its own copy." So here's what I need from you. As of today, I'm making you a deputy. I am even giving you a badge. Okay. Okay, I got to go find a picture of Deputy Badge. They're cute. Uh, let's see. We want to be on images. I like this one, I think. I mean, I don't... This one's just kind of boring. I don't want to get in trouble stealing somebody's picture. Where are these all? Tuesday. I really shouldn't just grab pictures. So I'm looking for something that's pretty gash-darn. Let me check my... My pictures and see if I happen to have one. I could. I don't know. Discount Help Guarantee Financial Download. I have stars. What else I got? By the way, those of you that got Pure Leverage, you got a nice library of cool graphics in there. You may not know it yet. But you got a nice thing of graphics that you can use. What if I look like a cop? I don't think I do, but... Cop? No. No. I'm going to steal a picture. I might get arrested and killed. I would never do this on a website, but on a letter, since it's kind of fleeting, I'm going to do it. Don't tell my mother. Don't tell her. I'll be in big trouble. Of course, I guess I am putting it on... I am putting it on my blog in a secret place. Um, I'll probably get killed. I'll take it down after I send out the letter. When I go to jail, will you guys come visit me? I'll read what you're saying in a second, Steph. I see you popping up on my iPad. Ooh, I don't want that to do that. I hit the wrong thing. I hit link instead of picture. Uh, picture. Okay. So I've been hitting my list pretty hard, pitching them today. There will be no pitch. I'm not selling anything. I'm going to ask them for help. What I want you to do is read my letters every day and then watch out for anyone else stealing them. Now, am I really concerned about this? Do I really want vigilantes out? No. I couldn't care less. It's just an interesting storyline. And what it does, it engages my list and also a lot of my readers. It gives them a job. They're going to go check every guru to make sure nobody stole my stuff. It glues them to me. It makes them closer to me. It also... The person who did it knows who they are, and other people know who they are. It gets back to them. And I want that to happen. So I want to do is read my letters every day and then watch out for somebody else stealing them. If you see it, contact me with the letter right away. Can I count on you to do this? I seriously need your help. And speaking of needing your help, you may know I am in the running to be a featured speaker at the No Excuses Summit at the end... When is it? In April? When did I say it was? May. Okay. It's in May. I don't know when anything is. So I'm going to ask them to go vote for me. Dot com slash vote. More importantly... But after you do that, would you pretty please pass this link along to your buddies and ask them to vote to... Oops, not live. Vote. So you see, this letter today is giving my list a break. I'm not trying to sell them anything. I'm not trying to whatever. I'm getting them more involved, more connected. And I'm also getting them to go out and help me get elected. Now, I'd like to have this video ready. I'll save this for a little bit. If I can get the video done shortly, I will go ahead and get it done. If I can't, I will send it out. It'll be fine. All right. Save the message. Let's test it. I know it's been an hour. We lost a lot of time messing around with that thing in my computer. If you want to hang tight and watch the end game, great. You guys got to take off. Catch the end on the recording. If you're not a member of Team Camelot, guys, you really want to find out about it. Aren't you tired of playing games? I talked to one guy yesterday, and I think Kathy's here, Thomas. It was so heartbreaking to me. This guy was telling me... And if it's you and you're watching, you know who you are, and I'm sure you don't mind sharing the story. I'm not going to talk about who it is. But they were breaking my heart because we were talking about autoresponders. And they were telling me about how much they're paying for their autoresponder because they built a list of 10,000, which everybody would be like, "That's incredible. He must be raking it in." But he's not because he was given advice and taught techniques that cost him a boatload of money. And now he's sitting here paying an arm and a leg for an autoresponder to keep a list that's unresponsive because he built it, you know, in my opinion, not the correct way. I have a little rinky-dink tiny list of loyal people that makes me multiple six figures. And other people are being told to build lists of tens of thousands, and they can't sell anything. Okay? Now, this guy, I think, is reborn. You know, he's born again. He sees the light and he's redoing what he's got going on. And I am passionate about helping people with this. If you're a part of Team Camelot, I'm going to be passionate about helping you. Get into one of our programs, whichever one you want, or more than one. If you really want some attention, get on board with a couple of things. But if you're here and if you're working with me, I can guide you. Okay? And I can talk to you and I can show you and I can tweak you and you can throw things in the group and I can take a look. The bottom-line problem is most people don't have enough eyeballs on their stuff and they don't have any influence. Okay? If you don't have any influence, I don't care how much you pay to get your stuff out. You're not going to score. One of my friends, who is a very prominent list broker, okay? It takes 100 to 200 leads to see a highly optimized offer to pop a sale. Okay? Now, if you have a lot of money to play with, you can scale it. I'm not saying that it doesn't work. But think about it. If you have to run an ad to blind traffic to get 100 to 200 leads, that's going to cost you several hundred dollars to make a $125, $30 sale. And then, of course, you have to, you know, make up the money in the backend. Okay? But if you don't know what you're doing and you're trying to make up the money in the backend, you can drown. And let me tell you, you can drown... to make up the money in the backend, you can drown. And let me tell you, you can drown quick. I'm checking my email. Do you remember the cartoon Deputy Dog? If you don't remember it, ask your mom or dad. I always read my letters aloud, so I hear the typos and the problems. Deputy Dog was super cool. And today I'm deputizing you. Are you a faithful reader? If so, I need your help. Apparently, there is a rash of people who are stealing my letters that I lovingly craft for you daily. Word for word, I gotta put in a thing. Doesn't read right. That's why I have to do this. Read it aloud. Come on, computer. All right, now we're locked up again. Welcome to my world. Let me see what Steph asked me. And a couple of other people, I think, asked me stuff. So pages. Let's go here. Oh, if you slide to unlock it, it works. Uh, let's see what people are saying. Team Camelot. Okay. Bob, they're not copycats. They're stealing it word for word. See, I could deal with a copycat. I could deal with somebody that's copying the concept or the idea. People do that all the time to my work. It's cool. Like the live work sessions. I coined the term live work section session. Within two days, two major leaders were doing live work sessions. That's okay. Um, I gotta refresh this and see if I can get to where Steph was asking questions. I'm cool with that. That doesn't bother me. What bothers me is when people just just swipe the copy because they're too lazy to write and they don't think enough of their list. How stupid do you think your list is? Do you even care about your people? You're just sending out some crap? I don't know. I don't. I don't dig that. Okay, we're going to Team Camelot. Okay, thy loving cloud for you daily, word for word, dot, dot, dot. And they are sending it out to their list as if it were their own. Oh, I forgot to do a spelling check. Now, where I come from, that's called plagiarism. Um, thank you, Kathy. Live such. Is this from today? Steph, did you write on the fan page? I saw you write something, but I'm not seeing stuff on the fan page, but I'm also on my iPad. Hang on. Ignore, change. Okay, that should be fine. And ignore. Ignore. Okay. So I need your help. Apparently, there is a rash of people who are stealing my letters and they are sending them out to their own list as if they were their own. Uh, use their and more than anything, it's just crappy way to treat your colleagues and your list, passing off stuff that you did not write as your own, just to make a buck because your lazy ass won't write its own copy. So here's what I need from you. As of today, I am making you a deputy. I'm even giving you a badge. And what I want you to do is read my letters every day and then watch out for anyone else stealing them. If you see it, contact me right away. Can I count on you to do this for me? I seriously need your help. And speaking of needing your help, as you may know, I'm in the running to be a featured speaker at the No Excuses Summit in May. Right now, I'm on the list of contenders, but it's a tight race. So can I ask you pretty please go and vote for me here? But after you do that, would you pretty please pass this link along to your buddies and ask them to vote too? I would so appreciate it. And if you are planning on attending the event, hang tight because I will be announcing shortly all the cool stuff my ticket holders will get. Uh, if you need the link to buy tickets, just let me know. Okay, so I'm not shoving a link in there, but I'm letting them know. Okay, thanks, Deputy You Rock and Diane. And we didn't put a signature file, which we need to put. Okay. Signature file is where your disclaimer is. By law, you need to have a disclaimer that says you will make money if they buy something from one of your links. Okay, so we'll save that. And then we're just going to check the links, make sure the links work. And if the links work, we're good. Okay, right click, open link into, right click, new tab. Okay, that's the wrong link. That was messed up. Uh, this one's right. So the second one I clicked, one of them was bad. This is why we check our links. What do we have here? I don't remember which one is which. Pop it. Okay, that one's correct. So what's this one? Copy. Yeah, it must have copied whatever was on my clipboard, which was the Deputy Dog. This is not what we want. Come on. Vote, apply, save. I gotta test it one more time. Let's check over here on Team Camelot and see what you guys said. And then we'll be good to go. Sorry, guys. I got screwed up. Sometimes it happens. Sometimes I can't get a video to work right, or this isn't that to work right. This is the reality. Would you rather have fluff or reality? I'm all about reality. Well, Shonita, you don't have guru influence. You create guru influence. Okay. And the way, uh, you create guru influence is to be all over. Okay, so if you often feel like blogging and you're doing videos is a waste of time and you don't do it consistently, uh, you're not going to get where you want to go. And I've known you for a long time, Shonita. You got to step up. And then the second thing is if you're entering with that thought process, uh, you're done before you begin. So, okay, you get a lot of your pictures from here. Okay, Kathy gave us a great royalty free picture place, which is awesome. Thank you, Kathy. Um, awesome. Deputy Dog is awesome. Uh, yes, Steph, you are correct. Steph is saying, I just realized when you write a letter, it really is like writing a blog post. It often takes the same amount of time and I put as much thought and effort into it, but my blog doesn't monetize like your direct emails do. Exactly, Steph, because what's happening is that I'm actually getting a direct response. A blog post is like a billboard. Come hang out with me. Here's what's going on. Now, you can put some direct response and you can put triggers in your blog post and you can also put, um, you know, embedded commands for them to go buy something or do something. Um, and you can 100% monetize a blog. Um, but the letters and the faithful readers, see, a lot of people, what they do is they create a blog and they SEO it to get cold traffic from wherever to accidentally find their site in Google and they're looking to make a sale that way. And does it happen? Yes, it does. Ask my friend Rob for etc. But there's a lot, a lot, a lot, a lot, a lot of work involved in it. And my feeling is if you guys could just compile lists of 500, if you compiled a list of 500 people that knew, like and trust you, and if you every day focused on it, by the end of the time you do that list of 500, and you can do it in 90 days, you would be able to make a good part time income in your home business. And by the time you hit 1,000, you can make a full time income. Um, so, you know, you're always looking for the monetization aspect. And you can do it through letters to your list with storytelling. I mean, today, I'm doing something fun. Thank you, Beth, for being my deputy. Beth, are you in any programs with us? I see you all the time. You may be and maybe I'm off and because there's so many people around me now. Guys, if I ever forget where you are, I never forget you because I know exactly who Beth is. It's just that sometimes there are so many people, it's hard to remember who's where. And you guys have to remind me. So Beth, send me a direct message over at my regular profile. Let me know. Are you in stuff with us? And if so, why don't we? I don't think you're in the group. Um, hello, Danita. Exactly. Use your iPad is awesome. Guys, I gotta tell you, if you don't have an iPad, one, get into an affiliate contest or something, win one or spend the money and buy one. I resisted them for I don't know how long and I won one. Thank you. Uh, thank you, Ryan Dice. And now it's, it's, it's the best thing I have ever had in my life. And I am so, it's made my business so much faster, quicker, easier. The videos, the portability, being able to access training, etc. It's awesome. Um, and I like that you, Danita, are double tasking. If you gotta do, you know, she got some coffee, she washed the dishes, she's doing stuff around the house. We're all moms and dads and, you know, regular people. This whole baloney that everybody teaches you that, you know, nobody has to do that stuff is baloney. I still make dinner every night and I enjoy it and want to. But I often have my iPad on the counter and I'm listening to a training while I'm chopping. So, uh, Audi, I don't know what was smooth, but I must have done something good. Okay. You know, that's funny, Nicole, what you said. She said, I watch you write the letters, but she still opens up and reads them. So, um, excellent, excellent, excellent. I will carry. I'll send you. The Animoto is free if you want the basic version, but you can't do the stuff that I do. I can download them and upload them and brand them and they have their own logos and junk on them if you use the regular thing. Um, okay, so I'll get you that link. Um, and this is Craig's from, from nine hours ago. So that's nothing. I don't know if any of you guys know him. If not, get ahold of him and sell him something. So we're just checking this link one more time. I'm done. I'm gonna go finish that video. You'll see it on Facebook. You'll see it in the group. I'll put it in the group so you guys can watch it and see what I did. I'm going to emotionally engage everybody. This week is important because the price of the tickets goes up on Friday and the voting ends on Friday. So I'm asking all of you, if you're watching, I really would appreciate your help promoting this. Okay. Um, you know, I know if you voted already, it's cool. But what I want you to do is put out the link every day and ask your people, ask friends, say, this person helped me. If I did, if I didn't, don't lie. But if I've helped you at all, please, I don't care if it's your Uncle Buck, you know? I don't care if it's your kids, teenage friends and you, you know, get all of them to go out and get votes for me. It doesn't matter who votes, as long as somebody votes. So, um, I really would appreciate it, guys. I'm going to check this, make sure it's correct. And then I am off to do some other work and everything. I'll let you guys know what's going on. Remember, in Team Camelot group, always let me know, what are you working on? What are you doing? I see some of you guys are really on task and some of you guys are still, and I'm saying this lovingly, pretty delusional. Okay, um, pretty delusional. Guys, it's consistency and getting visibility with your stuff. You need to meet the 10 people every day. If you meet the 10 people, uh, they will read your stuff. You know, it's interesting. My phone's been ringing off the hook lately, which it often doesn't, but a lot of people are just finding me all over. Um, and this is the way it always has been, you know, I just, I put my stuff out and I put it out consistently and I put it out diligently. And that's what you really need to do. That's what you really need to do. And, and don't think it's not going to work or it's futile. Because if you think that, you're done. You're completely done. So longer session today. I apologize, guys. I'm going to turn off the live stream. I'm going to go see if I can fix this video. You guys will see it later. I will also do a regular video and a blog post because I haven't done my content yet for you guys. But you'll see, this letter will do exactly what I needed to do. So hopefully you had a little fun watching it with me. I will see you guys later. Have a great day. Get some work done. But don't forget to enjoy your family and love them. I used to forget about that. Sometimes I get so caught up. Don't do it. I'll see you guys later.